Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. This meeting is open to the public. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by school committee members may be in person or remote and both types of attendance shall count quad quorum. We will have a public comment later in the agenda, so if any members of the public who are here in person would like to make a comment at that time, you'll need to state your name and address and I can give additional information when we get to that point in the agenda. So I am calling the meeting to order and just want to do a quick technical check. So we have committee members Kelly Persio, Lauren Loomis, and Jennifer Starr in the lecture hall, and we are expecting our student representative, Marvel Memmer. She is there. Okay. Marvel, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay.
Perfect.
And we have no voting members attending remotely today. All right. So with that, let's move to the first item on the agenda, which is a vote to approve annual state contracts. Lucini Transportation, VHS Transportation, and North River Collaborative lease. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Don't think David Twombly is here.
He is. He is remote. I can, I can't, I can't move him because I'm not a co-host. He's on here now.
Okay.
There we go. Nice to see you.
All right. Okay, so I'll start off. So the first one is, as Dan had mentioned, and Leisha, so this is all the state contracts. This is an annual contract that we usually do with all the state vendors. Some of them are on Mass Higher Education Consortium, but they've all been vetted out. So if you want, I'll just read through the list and then at the end of reading the list, if you have a question. If not, you can vote to enter into contracts with all these vendors. I do have one curveball, which I'll explain at the end. So the first vendor is Air Energy. The next one is Air X filters, Banner Systems, Bob is on, which is, they do a lot of theater work. CDW Government, which is a technology company. Cherry Road Technologies, which is on the Mass Higher Education Consortium list. Clean Cut Solutions, we buy a lot of custodial supplies from them. Core Business Systems, Custom Computer Specialists, Demoro Copper, Copper and Tile, Fernandez Lumber, which is obviously a local vendor here in Easton. So it's good to have them on the list. FM Generator, G and G Fitness Equipment, which is Gronk Fitness, Gibson Roofing, Gustavo Preston, which supplies us with pumps for mechanical systems, Industrial Burner Systems, which does periodic boiler maintenance, Isaac's Moving, Janko Sales and Service, which is another local vendor that provides food service equipment and repairs. Emmy O'Brien and Sons, New England School Services, North Black Power and Equipment, the Okers Company. We, Ren Visioning, which is actually, there's two contracts for them. This is the one curveball. So we're doing a FY25 contract, but in addition to that, we had purchased a new sound system for Mescalado Stadium several months ago. And as you know, Mike Cardoza, who is very involved with the theater program, he helps out a lot with the town meetings. He works for Ren Visioning, so they're an excellent company. But we would be approving also an FY24 contract because they're on state contract and we did purchase a sound system a while back. The next vendor is Singer Kittredge Food Service Equipment, Site One Landscaping Supplies, Southworth Milton, Train, which is an HVAC company, Valley Communications, which is a telephone company, W B Mason, and Wally Computer, which is another local vendor who is very supportive of the school department. He hasn't gone to have the identity. With that, if somebody wants to make a motion or if somebody wants to ask a question, we can proceed.
Okay. So I think, so I think, I think the list was in our packet, but we didn't have it printed in front of us. So if you were looking for, I could see he's kind of looking for the list. So, so David, can you, just where, where Kelly is completely new to this process and where Lauren, it's the second time through, can you just sort of give a little bit of a refresher on the state contract process, just for their education?
Yeah. So basically, Easton's a little bit unusual compared to some other communities. Typically, when you do a state contract, they've already been vetted by the state. They're on the state bid list. Same thing with the Mass Higher Education Consortium. So most school districts just purchase goods and materials and they do some maintenance stuff, but it's pretty much, they just go right off the bid list. They don't do contracts. But in Easton, as an extra check to the town, we have these two-page, they call requirements contracts, like an annual contract. And basically, we send them out to the vendors. We check to make sure that they're still on the state bid list. And then the vendor signs it, brings, sends it back, goes in front of the school committee, then the town accountant signs, Leisha signs, and everybody gets copies, and then we kind of go from there. So what it does is if we have to purchase, like, for instance, Air X filters, we purchase a lot of filters for the schools. This is for the HVAC systems. So we purchase like thousands of dollars of these things. So instead of having to go out and procure them, you go off the state bid list. And they give you the best pricing that you can get in the states because they've already been vetted up. So it's actually a good system. They've been vetted out by the, by the, by the state. They have insurance, so they meet all the insurance requirements. They meet the prevailing wage requirements. So they're usually, in fact, some of them really don't pertain to prevailing wage because most of it's just purchasing of goods and materials.
Okay, great.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you for the overview. So do any committee members have any questions on, on the contracts before we move to vote to accept them?
I have a couple of questions.
I do have a question. And it, it doesn't matter. It's not, it doesn't pertain to the vote. I'm just curious. Are there different vendors that we can choose from that do the same thing that are on this list?
Yeah, there are some other vendors, obviously, that maybe provide custodial equipment, custodial supplies. There may be other vendors that provide technology equipment or whatever, but these are the vendors that we typically have used off the state bid list. We've had pretty good luck with these companies. We've never had any problems with them. So we kind of, we like to do business with some of them. We have a good working relationship with these vendors. But yeah, there are, there's, there's multitude. There's like for each area, if it's, whether it's custodial, custodial equipment or technology, there's different vendors and you can pick from any number of them. And they're all on the state contract.
Got it. Thank you. That was my only question.
Kelly?
Are any of these vendors new to us or all existing for prior years?
Good question. I think for the most part, they're the same. I mean, we don't necessarily use all of these vendors, but if we get into an emergency situation, we may use a vendor. Like a good example would be Isaac's Moving. They're on state bid list. We used them last year. They did the, the move for the Plant James School. But chances are, we probably not going to do a move this year. But if we had an emergency situation, who knows? I mean, the last few years, Leisha can tell you that her and I had been involved with some crazy situations with weather and pandemics and stuff like that. So some of them we'll use, some of them we may not use, but we have used them either within the last year. We plan on using them this upcoming year.
Okay. So none of them are necessarily new contracts to us?
Not necessarily. No, no.
And you mentioned one wrinkle of the FY24 contract. Is that any, is that more of the formality of the contract or are there any budget considerations or anything else we need to?
That's more of a formality. So again, they're on the state bid list. So one of the requirements that the town requires is that you have a, either a state contract or a regular contract. So because Ren Visioning is on state bid list, we just need to do a contract for FY25, which is coming up in July. And we're also going backwards because we did purchase a sound system from Mescalado Stadium using Ren Visioning under the FY24 contract. So that's the only curve.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the annual state contracts?
So moved, Loomis.
Can I get a second?
Persio, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right. Okay, the next two, I'll kind of do, I'll kind of merge them together. These are special education contracts for transportation. One is for out of district special education transportation, and that is VHS Transportation. We've had them as our vendor for many years. We did, they do an excellent job. And then the other one is for in district special education transportation. Now would be Lucini Transportation. And Lucini is a two-year contract with them. That will kind of match up with their regular transportation contract that also expires in two years. So they kind of will end at the same time. We'll be going out to bid for regular transportation at that point. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on those two contracts. They should be in your packets.
It looked pretty routine to me.
Yeah, we, again, we've used these guys for a long time. We're familiar with them. They have the insurance. They do a lot of training, so they're good.
The contracts haven't changed in any material way from prior years. Obviously, financials, language is what it seems like.
Another, that's excellent question. Yep. Just in general, no, only the amounts. Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
And then also you said that the Lucini one is being co-termed with our existing arrangement with them? Is that correct?
So it's a two-year contract. So it ends, this contract, the in-district special ed ends in two years. And then the regular transportation, the big yellow buses, that contract's going to be expiring in two years. So both contracts will end at the same time.
Perfect. The co-termining is what I wanted to understand.
Yep. So the other one was a three-year contract.
Makes sense. That's what I was just confirming.
Sorry about that. I don't know if I misread.
I think you said it and I didn't. Yeah, no, it's fine.
It's okay.
Okay. So any question, any additional questions, comments, concerns about these two? We can vote them separately. Okay. All right. Then can I get, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Lucini Bus Line Special Education Transportation Contract?
So moved, Loomis.
Persio, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then can I get a motion to approve the VHS Transportation Contract?
So moved, Loomis.
Okay.
Persio, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is the North River Collaborative Agreement.
So the North River Collaborative, they've been here in the Easton Public Schools for several years. They rent out a couple of classrooms over at the Richardson Homestead School. I think it's a really good thing to have one of the collaboratives in your schools because instead of, some of our students who are part of the collaborative, instead of them having to go out of district in a van and also go to a different location, they can go to school with their neighbors, with their friends to the Easton Public Schools. And so they use two classrooms and we charge, we're going to charge, the, the lease is not going to change or the license, the amounts are not going to change this year. Craig Davidson, our sped director, went out and surveyed some other districts who host collaboratives and we're kind of on the higher side. So we decided to kind of hold the amount. So we charged them $15,000 per classroom. So that's a total of $30,000 that will be coming in as revenue.
Any questions from the committee on the contract itself?
RO doesn't need these cost terms for action, but.
Correct.
I have a question. Does North River rent space in other districts?
Yes.
Yep. As a matter of fact, they rent out space in Hull, where I want to school. But like I said, I think it's a great idea because, you know, students who attend a collaborative, like especially in this situation, they can go to school in their home district. It also saves the district money because not only are you bringing in the rental rate revenue, but you're also saving money on transportation. So if you have extra space and you can work it out, I think it's a great thing.
And my next question, I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't. Do we have any students that are part of the collaborative that don't attend school in Easton?
I don't know that answer, to be honest with you.
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the North River Collaborative lease?
So moved, Persio.
Second, Loomis.
All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
We got the David Twombly Show tonight.
Great.
Are you, are you on the next, the next item as well?
Well, this is more of a discussion, so Leisha might insert herself into this one. This is really, really what we want to do is kind of.
Hold on, let me introduce the item.
Take the temperature of the school committee about.
Hold on. Let me have you pause. I just need to introduce the item. Okay. All right. So next up on the agenda is the pay and ride with the possible vote. So Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So right now, we, we're happy to be able to provide pay and ride for students that fall outside of the state required zone for transportation. If you look on the little packet that you were giving you, given about pay and ride, you have the eligibility at the bottom of the page. We are responsible for transporting students for free who are between kindergarten and grade six. We actually aren't required to transport anyone from grade seven to 12, but obviously, we want to make it very accessible for students to come to school. And so we do provide that. We're also not required to transport anyone unless they live more than two miles away from school. What we do right now and what we're looking to change a little bit is, right now, we transport everyone who lives a mile and a half away from school and more. We're looking to extend it to the two miles, which would mean more students within the two-mile radius would either need to be brought to school or would have to invest in pay and ride. And also, in the past, we never had pay and ride. We transported all students who were in K to two, even if they were within a mile and a half or two miles of school because two of our elementary schools were in dangerous locations that we really didn't want to encourage walking. Now, because everyone is located on the campus and the surrounding neighborhood is more walker-friendly and there are sidewalks and bike, ability to ride bicycles, we would like to actually extend this so that pay and ride would be for students in grades K through 12, for anyone who lives two miles or less away from school. And in addition, the pay and ride, pay fee schedule is on the second page. Right now, for one student to participate in pay and ride, it's $175 for the whole year. We're looking to increase that nominally to 200. If there are two students, so if there's a sibling, it was 150, we're looking to increase that to 175. And three students, it was, the third student, I should say, was 125, we're looking to increase that to 150 with a family maximum cap of $500. Now, as with everything in the public schools, if there is anyone that qualifies for a free reduced lunch or has any economic hardship whatsoever, we do provide that for free. So we're looking for any, excuse me. So we're looking for any questions you might have or clarifications or comments on this and a consideration of a vote for us to do this. And just so you know, we're actually looking at all of our rates, including facilities rentals, sports and athletic, excuse me, sports and activity fees. We'll be bringing all of that to your attention. We have found that we're very much under comps. We haven't changed these in quite some time. And we are facing, this year alone, was close to 11% transportation increases. And we are looking for ways to offset that as much as we can with the constraints of our budget.
So can I summarize the changes?
Sure.
So all students, would we move to a two-mile radius?
Right now, anybody that's a mile and a half away from school or more, we transport them for free. But the state only requires us to transport people two miles away and more. So instead of someone who lives a mile and a half away, they would be transported in the past or even this year. Now we're looking to extend it to two miles. So if someone lives one and three-quarter miles away, instead of being transported for free, they would have to participate in pay and ride if they wanted to take the bus.
But I just want to make sure I understand because there's, there's two changes, I think I heard you say. One is on the distance of the 1.5 miles. The second is on the K through second. So even a kindergartner that lived a mile and a half away.
Yes.
Would have to do pay and ride.
If they are not transported to school on their own, their parents or guardians, then yes, they would participate in pay and ride.
Okay. And the pay and ride would still be that a student would not have access to the bus until late October and then would come off a waitlist. So the first roughly two months of school, they would have to find transportation until it was determined as to whether or not they made the bus. Because the, right now, the pay and ride program waitlist is not given out until the end of October, as stated here.
We try to make sure that all of the students that are outside of two miles are placed. We never know who's going to take advantage of the buses and who's going to be transported on their own. So we try to check the ridership for the month of September. So it's usually a few weeks. Correct, David?
Yeah, I would say through, few weeks.
Ridership. We try to do it as soon as possible and we try to make it before October, whenever we can.
So depending if somebody contacts us and they want to go on pay and ride, we check with the bus company and there's plenty of seats, then we'll try to pop them on earlier. So we don't like make people like, oh, it's now, you know, the, the sixth week into the school year, now we're going to put all the pay and rides on. We try to put them on as we get them as much as possible, but sometimes there is a delay based on how many kids are on a particular bus.
And the, but we would look to be reducing the number of buses through this?
No.
Reduce the number of buses?
No.
Well, I, I just.
No, I think it's more about just offsetting the, the costs.
Offsetting the transportation.
Costs, yeah. Yeah. So our transportation costs have increased a ton.
Understood.
Yeah. And so this wouldn't be designed to necessarily.
Bus routes are, as my understanding is designed by the number of kids that are impacted. So if the ridership changes to two miles, there are less kids who are eligible. Therefore, you would theoretically need less buses, which would also mean less spaces to open up for pay and ride. So the availability of buses would go down holistically unless we intend to hold the number of buses, guarantee the spots for two miles and beyond, and then attempt to shift the students in that half-mile radius to a pay and ride program. Because otherwise, families today who are between 1.5 miles and two miles, who are taking the bus today, would not potentially have even access to the bus.
Yeah, right. So the intent is to keep the 17 buses.
Yes, we have 17 buses. So all 17 are going through the local neighborhoods to get to the school. So the children are spread out through 17 buses. So we don't expect to lose any of the buses because of it. We have about, how many students on pay and ride currently? About 58?
Well, currently, with the grade three to 12 right now, we have 58.
Yeah. So it's not, it's not huge, it's not hundreds of children.
How many students would be impacted by this, though? How many?
They're actually, so it's a half a mile difference.
Yep.
And Lucini's bus service is actually tabulating that for us right now.
Okay.
Can we, so I would like to, oh, my mic's not on. Okay, now my mic is on. First, can we table this vote for next, until the next meeting?
Okay. Well, I think we do want to try to let people know as soon as possible about pay and ride. We usually do that before school gets out because we need to know how many kids are going to take advantage of pay and ride. That's the only thing we know for sure, is how many kids are going to take advantage of pay and ride. It's the other ridership that we're mandated to provide that we don't know.
Got it. Okay.
We, but it's your prerogative to table it, of course.
Because I would like.
So typically, we would send out a letter to the students who would be in the 1.5. In this case, if we were to go to the two, we would send out a letter saying, would you like to participate in the pay and ride program? That process typically starts before we get out of school for the summer. So that letter has not gone out. If we put it off, we'd have to, obviously, that letter's not going to go out till the committee makes the decision.
I would like to see the perimeter that two miles from the schools are in the, on a map.
Okay.
Yeah, I just. Because I just think two miles, if a, if a parent or caregiver has to go to work and a student takes the bus, two miles to walk to school is a lot. No?
It is. I just don't, I don't anticipate any of our students walk two miles or even a mile and a half to school, honestly.
I think, I have concerns about the younger kids with the, the K through two because I, I don't think even they'll walk the mile and a half. Like I, I do understand why we had busing for RO and Center and the dynamics there. I do worry about kids who live even beyond a mile radius at a younger age being able to get to school. Because if someone doesn't have, we're assuming that all those families have transport and have the ability to take kids to school at that time. And I just think that that is a tough situation. And I know that at least one of the after-school programs is no longer available next year. So I think it puts families in a tougher position. And I, and I just don't understand how many kids are impacted by this because it's two stages, right? It's K through second and it's the extra half mile. And I think for any of these kids, walking the two miles is a lot. And yet, I can't guarantee this is a parent home at 2:00.
And the financial impact on the family. And I know, I know you said if they qualify, but if they don't qualify, it's still a payment that they'll need to pay.
If they don't want to transport the children.
Well, it's honestly a case of want. For some people, it might be a case of ability. Like there may not be simply childcare available and with no, with one of the, one less after school program available, like that becomes a lot harder.
And I, I totally understand the thought process behind it. And I 100% support it. But this is screaming to me that it's like not, it's like an inequity issue of if you live two miles, I don't know. I think I need to think about it.
I'm very, I, I have a hard time with it. I'm being, I think a lot of companies are calling parents back to work and a lot of people are struggling with childcare right now. And there is a lot less childcare options available. And when you, especially with the younger kids, have to now pick them up or pay, it removes the ability to use even like a neighborhood kid to go get them at a bus. You know, like a 13-year-old can go get a kid at a bus today that they can't get if there's no bus. And with pay and ride, if you don't know until October, you have to find childcare for your child for all of September and early October and, and then hope you have someone, you hope you have a spot on the bus once it opens up. So I, I just, I'm concerned about how families actually execute this and what the implications are.
What if, if we could guarantee K through five spots from day one so that you don't have that issue of, do I have transportation arranged at the beginning of the school year or not? If that were logistically possible, would that alleviate any of the concern?
So that families, they would still have the, you know, still have to make the decision between, you know, are they comfortable having their child walk or arrange for transportation or enroll in the program and pay the fee? But at least there wouldn't be that uncertainty, especially for, I, I do hear the concern about, I think, for younger kids where there's a lot less flexibility in terms of what you're doing immediately, you know, after school.
If I, if I can just interject, I know the program that you're talking about that is not running next year. And if a family has to pay for, for pay and ride because they can't attend childcare, they don't have that childcare, that would be at the max 500 for the year versus the, the cost of childcare, which is a lot more than that.
Fully understand. It's the uncertainty. Like as, I mean, as a working, as a two-parent working household, the thought of this. the thought of this feels really stressful, let alone all of the other families. And I just can only imagine that trying to find alternative options if you can't guarantee the pay and ride spot. So perhaps there's a hybrid option. But if you can't guarantee the pay and ride spot and you have no way to get your child to and from school during normal business hours, when you have to be at work, until October, that's a huge challenge, right? So the uncertainty of how is my five-year-old getting to and from a school is hard. And if you're a mile and a half away, you can't really ask your 13-year-old to walk your five-year-old or your, you know, 15-year-old neighbor to then come back and get the six-year-old. Like, I just, I think a lot of families work out these sort of neighborhood support groups to get kids taken care of after school that are based on them being on the bus. And I'm not as, I think it's a twofold concern for me. One is the logistics and the ability to support working families in our community and the less childcare options those families have available as a backup plan, along with...
We do have the for and after care at our schools.
Isn't it full?
No, they're extending their licenses for next year because of the...
Because of the...
Full charge.
And I also wonder, David, I don't know if you know this, how many people we've turned away for pay and ride?
Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but I don't think too many. The toughest group is the high school, middle school. We actually, when we do the bus assignments, those buses are usually, we first do the assignments, they're a little bit over capacity, but then through attrition and students driving their mom and dad's car, or they have their own car, not all those kids end up being on the buses.
As they get their licenses.
I have no idea. I think the number's pretty small.
Yeah. I think that the...
Have we ever, are you aware of any K to five student that was denied being on a pay and ride situation?
I'm not aware of those kids.
But they don't...
We'll look, we'll look K to two. And there is, do you have an estimate on when we'll have that information, or not yet?
No, not yet. Nope, nope. Hopefully, you know, if you want to have it for the next meeting, you'd have to reach out to the bus company. They could, you know, if they could generate a map or they could give us a list of students one and a half miles away from school, two miles away from school, we could do that type of thing.
Would, would there be any appetite for, for K to two shortening the distance? Or would that be?
That's your call.
Yeah, yeah. So what do you guys, would you be more, would, would there be greater comfort, again, going, transitioning from, like, K to two's going right, everybody can get on the bus? Clearly, many people don't, right? Is that traffic pickup line at Blanche Ames will tell us. There are many, many people who are not taking advantage of the bus, even though it's free, right? For a variety of reasons. But I'm wondering if it would, if it would be easier for families if that radius were shorter than two miles? If we were to maybe go one and a half or one mile? Because I think with, with a mile, that is a walkable distance for a small group of kids. No, but there's groups of kids, or with a sibling or whatever. Sibling who can wait for them after school, that kind of thing. That's how my kids used to do it. My kids walked to school every, we were very close, but they walked every day, year round, all weather.
I grew up around the corner from my school, so I totally get it. I did the same. But I do... I would like to see the number of students that two miles impacts.
Okay, so maybe broken down by, by school?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of get the, the age impact.
I think I'd like to just see a few options. I'd like to see some data on the number of kids impacted by this. I'd like to, both the K through two and then, and maybe some radiuses, to your question, John, on the K to two. Like, how many kids are within a mile, mile and a half, two miles? If we have an understanding of bus utilization at those ages, I think that's helpful, too. I know there's a long line, but there's also a lot of kids at that school. I think we would need to have a plan for the people who are waiting to pick up the kids, where they go. So if a middle schooler is waiting to walk a Blanche Ames student home, where do we want them waiting? From a safe standpoint? Like, where is a safe waiting spot for them to gather these kids?
I think that's already in place.
That's already in place, yes.
Okay.
There are many middle school students and students from, that go to, or high school students that go to Richardson Olmsted and Blanche Ames to get their siblings.
Okay. And we are comfortable that if that number doubles, we are still have a safe space for them to be?
I can, we can check with the principals, but I don't think it would be a problem at all.
I do, I think this is kind of opening a can of worms. But I have heard of situations where it does become problematic because if a RO or middle school student is waiting for, for their sibling at the other school and they need to use the restroom, they can't be let into the school because school is still going on. I thought they gathered outside.
They do.
They do gather outside. But if they have to use... But if they have to use the restroom, there is no, and I've heard that does become an issue.
I would think that was something that...
I think that it's...
Planning a student could take care of that before they leave the school that's a five-minute walk away.
I agree, but...
Okay.
But that is feedback that I have heard and seen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think in some cases, you're talking about maturing humans, right? You may not always think through the implications of that decision. So I'm just, so I guess I would like to see the data, to Lauren's point. I understand the urgency to make the decision, but this feels like a really impactful decision to a lot of families. And I, I have concerns about it. I do think, I think the transportation cost is an issue. So there's that. But I do think we need to give consideration to that data. I also would like to understand if there's a way for us to, if we keep the same number of buses, determine if we can accelerate, to your point, any number of kids, understanding whether or not they have a spot on the bus before the school starts. I think that's really important for families. I think the reason we have 58 kids and not more is because other arrangements have to be made. I mean, when you're up against a wall and you need to cover your kiddies in September, you basically put them in a program and keep them there for a long time, or you hire a sitter or what have you. So I think getting that answer sooner will be helpful for a lot of families.
Yeah. And I would imagine that especially with the K to two, where the transportation is offered freely now and we have room for everybody who needs it now, I would imagine that bodes well for having room for anybody who would be opting for pay and ride.
Well, that's why I asked the question.
That ridership would, yeah, that the number of students per bus would likely decrease. I know enrollment is increasing at the same time, in general, with, you know, our new kindergartners coming in and additional sections being added. But hopefully, those numbers, you know, in analysis would work out that we could guarantee with some certainty that folks would be able to use transportation using pay and ride from day one, again, at the very least at those younger ages.
Yes, and that's why, that is exactly why I asked if we were intending the number of buses to go down. Because my understanding from Lucini, from prior conversations, was that they would not, the routes were based on the kids and the ridership and enrollment. So I just want to understand the logistics of how that works if we have so many that are paying at that point. And then I would also say, I would like to understand if there's a multi-year or tiered approach we could take with us so that we can make a decision now that will, say, for example, increase pay and ride rates and will move to continuing to bus K through two outside of one mile. And then in year two, for family planning purposes, we can let families know that it's going to move to another step in terms of preparing to increase costs. Because I do think this is a lot of change for families. And now, you know, we are close to the point where we would have to let everybody know and there's only a few months to coordinate that. So I just wonder if there's a way to, like, do this in stages? If there's a proposal under which we could come up with that would allow us to do this in stages so that families can better prepare for it and adjust for what they would be doing.
Okay. I did want to point out, on the rates itself, if we put the per-family max at 500, then the third student is effectively 125. We would need to, because we've increased each by 25 to realize all of that for the per-family max, we would need, that would need to be 525.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So...
How much do we...
If you add these up, it comes to 525. So the third student's never going, would never be 150, would still be 125 at that max.
Do we also have the data on how much this will offset our costs?
It depends on the figures that David gets from Lucini.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, it's still, this by no means covers the cost of even offering pay and ride. The district is still...
We're trying to maintain seven to 12 service for free.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't process what that meant. Can you say that to me one more time? We're trying to maintain...
Grade seven to 12 for free.
Okay.
Over two miles, yeah. Yeah, so some districts either don't offer it or charge for that, too.
Yep. And we're charged based on the number of buses, correct?
Yes.
And I think Lauren had asked about a map to be able to understand that distance and...
A map of two miles, number of students impacted, and K to five spots guaranteed from the first day of school is the three things that we're looking into. Was there anything else?
And I guess my, like, the other question would be, do we have any ideas of a way we could do this in a tiered approach? Is there a tiered approach that would make sense? For example, I'll throw out an example. Could we say, at 1.5 miles, we guarantee, at any grade level, we're going to guarantee you a spot, but it is pay and ride? For example. Right? So at the 1.5, the people who are impacted in that half-mile radius, could we guarantee them a spot next year? Because they were guaranteed a spot now, but they must move to pay and ride. That would allow us to, that would allow, the families who are using the bus today at that radius to continue to use the bus, but they would just move to pay and ride, which would help us with some of the cost offset. Yes, there would be a financial implication, but it's better than not guaranteeing a spot, in my opinion. Like, that's my opinion. But I just, I'm trying to think through, like, how do you help a family through the process of, today, you have life planned around my five and up, right? Or, you know, grades three and up or whatever can get on the bus, right? So I have an eight-year-old who can get on the bus and they live 1.6 miles from the school, for example. Next year, we're saying that might not, that might be in question. But if we could guarantee that to them, but just say you have to move to pay and ride, that would allow us to at least guarantee that for them still. Same number of buses, roughly same number of kids. So in theory, that might be an option while it's still managing their cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
So that's the kind of thing I'm trying to think through. Like, is there, realizing that, like, I'm just gathering this information, but just is there a way to help people through a transition period?
Yeah.
What would happen? And I apologize as I'm thinking this through. It may not have come out very well. But if a student in, in Blanche is on pay and ride and then the sibling at RO, there's no room on the bus.
You think that happens?
So that does happen.
That's, those are two different runs.
Right, but like, is there, but then, but then it becomes a family issue because the parent who, or guardian who was counting on their kid, on their student going on the bus, now both students wouldn't be able to ride, or it wouldn't make sense for both students.
Yeah, so you would have one student, one student would have a spot and the other wouldn't.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, I think as we get more data...
Yeah, if you're saying, I can check on that. If you're saying that's happening now...
I don't know. I believe that has happened now.
So that's because one's paying and one isn't?
No, because one, because it's two different routes.
Yes.
The K to two student may have, there might be an open spot, but the three to five student, there might not be...
Now, we transfer all of them.
K to two gets the spot.
So then, three to five, there might not be a spot on that bus is what, is what Kelly's saying.
She was saying, in a future, right? So in a future state...
Because it's based on availability.
Yeah. Yeah, so in a future state, right. Because you have probably families now...
What happens is that it's a, what happens is it's from, they call it, they call it portal to portal. So it's from the house to the front door of the school. So depending on where you are located, what Lauren's saying could theoretically happen. Because if you have one student going to Richardson Olmsted and you live towards the back of Richardson Olmsted, you may not be eligible for the bus because you might be a mile...
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's something...
Quarterway, but then if you're at Blanche Ames, it's a mile and a half.
No, 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 no. I think Mrs. Pruitt understands what I was asking.
Yeah, it was, it was, K to two, we transport them. So if, if I'm a parent and I have a first grader who gets on, who is taking the bus and my third grader, I'm pay and ride now for the third grader and there's no spot on that bus, I then would have to drive them where my, where my first grader... What, so what I would probably end up doing as a parent is just driving both, yes.
Right, but if you have to work and you have to pick up at 2:30.
Right.
That's right. So the way that it works today with the high school, because the high school, we don't always have spots, at least in the beginning of the year, not until it gets lower enrollment. You can pay and ride for a fifth grader and there might be a spot, but there might not be for your sixth grader or your seventh grader because it's a slightly different bus route.
Right, that's what, that's the point you're making. Right, right.
And my question was, does that happen? And what do you do in that situation?
So I guess.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that happening either, so, yeah. And from what I think David said is we have, he does not recall anyone that has turned down, I'm sorry. And we have not, he does not recall any family that's been turned down for a pay and ride spot.
K to five.
K to five.
Yeah, I think they've had to wait, but they have not been turned down. I, I personally was told I had to wait till October, so I had to hire a sitter anyway. So I was never turned down, but there was no space available, and I would be told sometime in October if there was a space. So I had to find childcare for that time, so I had to hire a sitter, which is fine. Like, that, sometimes that's what you have to do, right? But that's just the, I just want to understand the implications of that because pay and ride effectively for most families doesn't start until October unless we're able to find a way to get that answer sooner. So if you're finding childcare for September.
Right. Yep.
So that's just the way that works.
So I wonder, I also wonder, David, if that's a process thing that we could look at to make sure that we get the pay and ride up and running at an earlier timeframe?
Yeah, we'd have to talk to the bus company.
Right.
I think usually they want to see if things kind of settle down and get an assessment of how many kids are actually taking the bus every day. I don't think it happens too much at Richardson School. I think the high school's definitely a potential problem.
Do we, you mentioned that if a student has any need, how do they demonstrate it? Is it the same way for the launches?
There, so we have something called direct certification where we get notified from the state if they make use of any social service programs. But they, there's also an application if they either aren't eligible or don't apply for those programs, they can apply for this.
Okay. And if there's a physical challenge that the student would have walking the distance, is there a process for that as well?
If a student has an IEP for transportation, then they get transportation for free.
Okay. Would a K through 12 student today have an IEP for transportation, or would that be something new that gets opened up?
No, we have that now. That means their IEP calls for it, not necessarily because of where they live or if they have to go to school a certain way.
Understood, okay. I was just, I was trying to think through, if a child had a physical limitation to walk the mile at age five, would there be a process by which we could ensure that they were covered or supported? And does that require a new process with IEPs, or are they already covered?
Okay.
Go ahead.
We would utilize either file four, an IEP for a health plan.
Okay.
Right.
Patients or students with disabilities that needs that level of support and have it in part of my office.
Okay. Thank you. I assume there's a way? I just feel like I need to ask because I'm trying to think through all the kids and all the scenarios and all the families and, you know, a child who might be perfectly fine and get around the school, but not to walk a mile, right? Just trying to think through, like, what, how we support everyone while balancing the high cost, right? Which is a challenge.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts?
Do we know for certain that there will be additional after-school programs available in schools? I mean, you mentioned that they are extending their license to be able to provide more options.
More capacity.
Capacity.
I know they're applying right now. They may have gotten it already. I'm not, I didn't check that, but I know that they are, they did apply.
Okay. For all schools? For the schools they offer the program in, if I'm not just saying that correctly.
Okay, all right, so we will add this to the agenda for the June 20th meeting. Additional information, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to approve the harassment and bullying pro, the harassment and bullying prohibited file JBA and prohibiting and addressing bullying file JICFB. And these are the second readings of these policies. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So you can see the redlined corrections that Carols Perez discussed at the last meeting. And I believe she's here remotely. If you have any questions about any of those changes from your first reading.
I do not see her remotely.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh. You're listed, you're listed as Lynn Souza, so, sorry about that, Carols.
Oh, that would explain a lot, okay. I was like, why are there two Lynn Souza? Oh, okay, that's me, let me change my name.
Okay, so. Yep, Carols, we're looking at Paul, at J, file JBA, so what was the, Lauren, what was your feedback? Carols, can you hear me?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I keep muting because Zoe made screen, so.
So it's super minor, but in section three, investigating enclosure of a complaint, where we added the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility, the word before it is "the." So I don't know if we want to scratch the underca, the lowercase "the."
Yep, that makes sense.
In the same paragraph, the third line down, you should inform the principal, his/her designee, being consistent with the other gender neutral changes that were made. Do we want to change that to their designee?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, it's changed online, I'm sorry, which paragraph are we talking about?
It's not on this one. Right, the third line down.
They missed one, yeah.
First. First one, right there, yeah.
Thank you.
And so my same comment about "the" and "the" is.
The last.
The last line.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
The challenge of finding a place to.
All right, did anybody else have any other? Feedback?
There are a couple of other places where it does say his/her. So if you go to the very last line of section one, which is actually on the next page, right above section two, there is a his/her against his/her will.
Ah, gotcha, yep.
I see that as well.
There's, there's a couple, we can search it.
Okay.
I'm just looking at under, in the first paragraph under definition of harassment says his/her duties.
Yeah, because of the slash.
Yeah.
I think it wasn't picked up on the, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
I have a question that I should have caught and raised in the last session, so I apologize that I did not. But under the investigation enclosure of a complaint, obviously the student would, could inform the principal, the designee, a guidance counselor. What about the adjustment counselors as we have them in the schools and that becomes a safe person for them to go to? Is that a person that we would include on individuals they can inform or re-specifically and intentionally using the principal, the designee, and the guidance?
Principal and designee is based on the statute. But it does say school personnel will inform. So there have been times where once the, the investigations have to be done by an administrator. So once the, once the investigations have concluded, if it is in the child's best interest to have, it can be any trusted adult, it may be their guidance counselor or their adjustment counselor, it may be their science teacher who they have a connection with. We sometimes can bring those people in to have that wrap-up conversation with the student. But that's case by case, given the child's, the adult that they have the best relationship with.
So should you take out guidance counselor or, or add trusted adult instead?
Or staff.
I would take out, I would take out, my recommendation would be to take out guidance counselor and put, and just leave it as is, principal or their designee.
But if I was a student reading that, I might misunderstand designee as someone that, like, the principal designates as opposed to any, I could go to my favorite teacher, I could go to my advisor, or my adjustment.
Right.
Or I just want to make sure that.
So we could leave it as, so we could leave it as school personnel.
Right.
I mean, put school personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you should inform the principal, their designee, or other school personnel?
Yes.
I think that would be helpful for the, for all the relationships they form with teachers and with advisors and coaches and what have you. I want to make sure that they have the right.
On the last line of that same page, it's the offices, Office of Diversity, Equity, Equity, Inclusion.
Yep, yeah.
I'm having you pretty ready to, no, I'm ready. Give an eye for it.
You're a good substitute for Nancy.
Yes, you are filling her shoes well today.
I was gonna say Caroline.
Okay.
We would have to change the revised date, obviously.
Yep. Okay, all right, so if, anything else, or do we want to go ahead and vote to accept these updates? I just want to go through that other one really quickly.
Yeah, we'll vote them separately.
I see, okay.
Yep.
So are we voting to approve contingent to the updates we just discussed?
Yes.
Yep. Lauren, did you have anything else?
I do see some spacing issues, but I don't know if that's like.
Well, it's also, if it's like fit to the margins, then that's when the spaces are, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the edits as discussed and noted to file JBA, the harassment and bullying prohibited?
So moved, Loomis. First, yours, second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so then for file JICFB, which is the policy prohibiting and addressing bullying. So Carols, is there anything here that you want to draw our attention to?
Other than, oh, sorry, it's getting close to bedtime, so you know. Give me one second. Other than the, the policy, if you see, I believe in your copy, it's highlighted, anonymous reporting. My recommendation is that we use our bullying form. Is that we use our bullying form and put, I can work with Director Ramos to put an option for anonymous reporting. And if you see the, the, the sentence right after says, "No formal disciplinary action shall be taken solely on the basis of an anonymous report." But at least that helps us at the school level to investigate and talk to the possible victim and make sure that they're safe and they feel okay at school. And gives whoever wants to report the ability to do so at a private or confidential level. But that, I, I wanted to note that because that is different than what has been done in the past in Easton. And this was based on a recommendation from our attorneys as something that most districts in the Commonwealth are moving to.
Okay.
We have, so just to be clear, we have had anonymous reporting, just have had the bullying form online for anonymous reporting.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What defines a viable report?
I mean, in my eyes, it's someone that we can go back to. So for example, I, if I have questions about a report and it's left anonymous, I may not be able to get those questions answered because I don't know who submitted it. Or if it's something where they're making a report and we need to give them supports and services, we may not be able to do that if we don't know who is doing the reporting. So all reports are viable, it's just how far we can support a person reporting. If they give their name, then we can support and offer any and everything that we have in our power to do so. But if they don't, then we're left with just the knowledge of it and not being able to support.
So just to understand the line under investigation procedures, the principal or their designee, upon receipt of a viable report, shall promptly contact the parents or guardians of a student who has been the alleged target or alleged perpetrator of bullying. So would the principal or designee not contact parents or guardians in the situation where it's an anonymous report, but investigate it further to deem if it's an accurate report? Or would the anonymous?
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand that scenario.
Yes, that's correct. And in, in this district, I have not had, I have not experienced one where we have not had names. But in my experience in the past and in other districts, that's, you are exactly correct. We can only give information to the parents, hey, this was reported to us. Can you speak to your student and, and see if they're feeling safe and okay? And we're here to support however we can, but we need more information.
Okay, so an anonymous, anonymous report, it would be up to the investigation process to determine whether there's something there to contact the parents?
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
How is cyberbullying determined that it's occurring on school grounds?
Timestamps, IP addresses, things that I am not very knowledgeable of, but our tech team, that is fabulous, does their thing. What we also learned most recently is it also covers our, our school purchased and own devices. So all the Chromebooks that our students have, we are, we are responsible if things happen on those devices. Whether or not they're.
Claire, permission from Desi on that.
Yep.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we should have, oh, through the use of techno. Oh, okay, sorry, it's there.
Don't be sorry.
All right, any other? Questions or feedback? You ready to, you just want to vote? You good, Lauren? Okay. All righty. All righty, then, I will make a motion then to, to accept the changes to the prohibiting and addressing bullying file JICFB. Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Good night. Oh, wait, no, hold on, did I? I think we missed one.
Yeah, I'm confused, yeah. But there's two copies.
JJCFB?
JICFB is what we just.
JICFB.
When you have it.
JICFB, did we just?
Yes, the one that's in your packet tonight is replacing the one that was shown to you at last meeting.
Oh, because we have.
The one that was, is in your packet tonight has updates from our attorneys.
Okay, so there are two.
Both are in our packet.
They're both in our packet.
Okay, so let me just see.
Oh, I see, the one that has been adopted and revised is the old.
Correct.
Okay.
The one that has no adoption and no revision date, that is the new one.
Got it, okay.
I see, okay.
And the new one is aligned with our, with our actual reporting. And as, as Ms. Perez said, that it's, it, our attorneys have, it's more, it's what, the, these are the steps that most of the, most of the districts are using as well, yes.
Okay.
Updated, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, our personnel changes. So we have a few retirements. Dr. Cabral?
I will say, and I know you like to talk about celebrations, so I will save it for script notes, but we did just honor all three of these professionals at the retirement party, which took place at the Easton Country Club a little bit earlier today. And it was a pleasure to see them, and certainly we congratulate them very much. And they well-deserve retirements. The first is Lori Nigro. She is the food service manager she began at Blanche Ames. She began her career in Easton in 2008 as a food service substitute. In 2009, she was appointed to cafeteria helper at Center School. And in 2013, she became the cafeteria manager. In 2022, transferring over to Blanche Ames as the food service manager. I can tell you that that was quite a big endeavor to go from a kitchen of, a school of 200-ish students to a school of over 800 students, and she was phenomenal. And she was phenomenal in that effort. She's been with the district for a total of 16 years and she plans to retire effective the last day of school. She was unable to attend this evening, but she asked that we, that I expressed to the school committee, quote, "It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the students and town of Easton and afterward." I'll also add that Lori was an amazing SBA unit, union rep for many years. And we negotiated with her and she was a wonderful advocate on behalf of her colleagues. And she's going to be very missed. She is just a lovely person. And as I said, it was really fun to honor her this evening and our other colleagues.
So I will read her letter. Dear Alicia, I'm writing to inform you of my intention to retire as food service manager at Blanche Ames Elementary School. My last day will be June 13th, 2024. This last day is a cleaning day. It has been my pleasure and honor to serve the students and the town of Easton, but it is time to start a new chapter in my life, Lori Nygro. So do any school committee members have any, any words? I do. So I actually, I know Lori through her many, many, many years of dedicated volunteerism to the hockey program. So at the, at the retirement party today, you know, hearing and, and reading her bio and, and hearing about her years of service, it didn't surprise me at all because it absolutely paralleled what I saw in Lori as a volunteer, just willing to roll up her sleeves, do anything, organize anything to support the program and to support the kids. So she will be very much missed, but I, I guess we'll echo, we'll, we'll channel Nancy and say, apparently you will enjoy retirement. Okay. All right. So let's go on to, we want to vote them all separately? Yes. Okay. All right. So would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Lori Nygro with regret?
So moved, Loomis. First, yours second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, next.
Karen Warner. Karen is RO, Assistant Food Service Manager. She began her career in Easton as a lunch playground aide in 1998 at Parkview School. In May, from 2002 to 2008, she was a substitute in the cafeteria. In the 2008, 2009 school year, she covered a leave of absence as the interim assistant manager at Richardson Olmsted. But in 2009, she was appointed as the assistant food service manager. She remains there today. And after 26 years in the district, she also intends to retire on the same day, cleaning day, after the last day of school. She, I don't think she's available to join us this evening, but again, we did honor her today and that was wonderful. Something that I would like to mention about both Karen and Lori is for any of you that took advantage of the food service program throughout COVID, they were, we truly couldn't have done it without them. The amount of time that they put in in coming in during COVID, when schools were closed, preparing not only lunches for students, but we gave, I don't know if people remember, I remember things once in a while that happened during COVID and I, it's like I'm remembering it. It's like, it's the first time it happened. I can't believe we lived through that. We were actually giving boxes of food, weekly boxes of food for families. And our, our food service staff did that. They, they put that together with, with administrative volunteers and staff volunteers. So I just want to make sure that I accentuate that point about both Lori and Karen and, and in addition to nourishing our children every day, really went above and beyond when necessary and we appreciate them and we'll miss them both very much.
Okay. So I'll read her letter. Dear Superintendent Alicia Cabral, with great regret, I would like to inform you that I will be retiring at the end of this school year. I have worked in the Easton school system for over 20 years. Later of my career, I worked at the Richardson Olmsted School as assistant manager of the kitchen. I have enjoyed all my time with the great people of Easton, but it's time for myself and my husband to enjoy. I will miss everyone. Thank you, Karen Warner. Okay. So any, any words from committee members? Well, it was, I'm glad that she was able to make the retirement celebration today. It was really great to be able to thank her for her service in person and to hear the stories about her service to the, to the school district. So, so we wish you the best in your retirement and thank you for all of your years of serving our kids with, with heart and a smile. All righty. And the next one, Dr. Cabral? Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Karen Warner with regret?
So moved, first yours. Second? Second, Loomis.
And all in favor? All right.
Thank you. And the third this evening is Elaine Malouf. Elaine is a paraprofessional at Easton Middle School. She began her career in Easton as a substitute. And in 1999, she's appointed to the position of paraprofessional at what was the Easton Junior High School. She currently remains in the position at the middle school and she's been with the district for a total of 26 years. She plans to retire at the last day of school. Again, I'm not sure, I, I was told she may not be able to attend this evening, but she also was at the celebration today. It was wonderful to see her. She is a kind, impatient paraprofessional who has provided amazing service to the students at the middle school. She will be greatly missed by staff and students and I really appreciate her time as a colleague in the middle school. And it's bittersweet to see these people go, but they deserve this well-earned retirement and we wish her very well in that.
I'll read her letter. After 25 years of being a paraprofessional at Easton Middle School, I have decided to retire at the end of the school year. I have been very fortunate to work with so many amazing people and help so many children over the years. It was a very tough decision to make, but it is now time for me to focus on myself and enjoy time with my family. Sincerely, Elaine Malouf. Okay. So any comments from committee members? So one of my kids, actually, you know, Mrs. Mrs. Malouf, as he called her, was one of the ones that I heard about a lot at school, one of the very helpful helper teachers, as my kids call them. So being a para is, it's, it's a tough job. It's tough at the middle school age. And to do it for 25 years is really, really amazing. So thank you for all of your years of service and for the impact that you've had on so many kids over the years. We will miss you and wish you well in retirement. Okay. So can I get a motion then to accept the retirement of Elaine Malouf with regret?
So moved, Loomis.
Can I get a second? Roll call, oh, not roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is a discussion and vote to approve a step seven request. And this, Dr. Cabral, I think is the first time we've had to do one with Kelly. So a little background would be helpful.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
So the current Unit A contract stipulates that the maximum credit for previous experience that a teacher or anyone in Unit A can receive when they join the Easton Public Schools is six years, regardless if they've had 20 years of experience, unless the school committee decides that such placement is in the best interest of the school system. That has not typically been an issue for all the way, maybe the last 10 years or so of, that I've been in the district. Excuse me, about eight or nine years that I've been in the district. However, the last two years, we've seen a significant change. And what I mean by that is we typically have had so many applicants for every position that we're able to get someone with a few years of experience, all the way up to possibly six years of experience, and hire them at a relatively lower rate and have them stay with us for quite a long time in the district. After COVID, there were, there, there has been a gap in pre-service teachers who were able to continue their program, teachers, pre-service teachers who were able to do student teaching, people who put that on pause. And there has been a short of, shortage of teachers. And during that time, we've seen quite a different shift where honestly, when I was a teacher and again, for many years since, once someone has been vested in a district for eight to 10 years, you generally don't move districts. That has changed significantly. The other change is that we have a lot more specialized positions that never existed before from instructional coaches to, I'm thinking of all positions, but they're not all in Unit A, like interventionist and other, other positions. And so we have had some very experienced people moving from district to district. Now, in Easton, we also added specialized, special education programs. And for those programs that are dealing with our most vulnerable students that typically would go out of district and we're keeping them in their home district, we want to make sure that we're getting people who are experienced, working with a certain population of students, depending on the, the profile of a particular program. With that said, the last two years, we have unfortunately lost several candidates in an extremely competitive, low supply chain market for educators. Because if a student, if a, excuse me, a candidate has eight, nine, 10, or 20 years of experience, I would typically have to wait, or I do currently wait for a school committee meeting before I'm able to give them a, an offer with a salary, which of course most people want to know before they make a decision. That sometimes can take up to a month. For example, I had an interview a few days ago. We fortunately had this meeting scheduled. We don't have another one for another two weeks, but we have a lot of interviews in that time. Even if we needed to call a very quick meeting to have a discussion about this, the soonest we can ever do that is within 48 hours. And we are losing candidates. We actually lost one this week. So what we don't want to do is lose candidates that are in our most hard-to-fill positions or our specialty or therapeutic programs because they're in such demand right now that other districts are giving them offers immediately and we need to wait for quite a bit of time. So what I'm asking is if the school committee will consider allowing the school committee chair, in consultation with me, to approve hires over step seven if we feel, as noted in the contract, that it's in the best interest of the students in the district. If we have no other qualified applicants or it's a very hard-to-fill position and the experience is warranting of this kind of an action. We can put a limit on it and we can, for example, say that that is approved only until the next school committee meeting. At the next school committee meeting, we could report out if any of those offers have been made and if they had been accepted before you make a decision to perhaps extend it to the next school committee meeting. It doesn't have to be sort of a carte blanche opening. But what I don't want to do is put the position in a district that we were in last year where we lost about a half a dozen positions and some remained unfilled truly through the fall, which was, is not in the best interest of our students. So I would ask for your consideration of that or any version of that and a potential vote to allow that, even if it's only until the next school committee meeting.
Okay. So I know, I know we went through, I know you're familiar with some of this because we went through it last year and then you're just getting your feet wet with this tricky, this just tricky contractual, contractual obligation, which our, our council, by the way, has opined is very unusual. So this is not a thing that most.
Which piece of it is usual?
The, the having it in the contract.
In the number of years of experience cap.
Yeah.
I see.
Limiting, limiting the superintendent's ability to, to make that determination without a school committee vote. Yes. Yes.
Is that in our policies?
It's.
No, it's in the bargaining contract.
It's in the bargaining contract. So it's, yeah, something that gets discussed in that context.
Okay.
Yep. So anyway, so it sounded like you had some thoughts.
My thought is, my initial thought was I 100% support it. And it would keep our staff happy and it would keep our students, it fill the need of our students. But if it's in our bargaining contract, it makes me wonder why it's there.
That would be a conversation for bargaining.
Yeah.
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 Because it seems to me it's in the best interest of everybody.
It's language that's been there for a very, very, very long time. So, and I, I think the, you know, without, I don't want to speculate or project too much, but it seems that the, the educational landscape has changed significantly probably since that clause was there. And as Dr. Cabral mentioned, for, you know, for a very long time, the norm was you get settled in a district, you stay there for life. So there weren't people moving with a lot of experience and expecting to have their compensation reflect that experience where I think, again, the, the landscape has changed so much just recently. So, yeah.
Are there any, I guess I'll address this to all of you who's involved in this. Are there any new upper limits that we would need to consider or that you think are prudent meaning, but if a teacher came to you and said, I have 15 years, so I realize the number right now is six, I have 15 years of experience, does that have a significant financial implication or anything to us that we would need to reconsider it? Or given the fact that we're there for getting a very veteran season teacher, that could be an amazing course? But is there, is there anything like that that we need to think about in terms of boundaries?
When we have a sense of the positions, when we're doing the budget, we do project, we do projections in the budget. And when we know it's a harder-to-fill position, we project a higher amount.
Okay.
Because we have a sense that there are not many candidates out in that area or we have a sense that we really need a very experienced person in this area. So we typically project that out. We don't just have a set amount in the budget for the following year. That can vacillate because we may get someone that's phenomenal with just a small amount of experience. And then we may have another position where there's a dearth of candidates and we actually have to hire more than we thought. It typically evens out over the course of a hiring season.
I guess another question I had, just logistically thinking about the fact that you are in the midst of hiring and interviewing. You are in the midst of packing, which is very important stuff.
I'm very available, but maybe put a designee.
Do we need to think of our, our prior language on designee?
Yeah.
Do you think about a, a designee being the vice chair if you are unavailable so that you have the information you need and you run it?
Yep.
And a major time difference, hours away in joining what is called disorganization and not even trying to juggle like an important offer letter.
Yep.
I mean, without Lawrence's permission, I'm suggesting this, but I just, you know, I'm wondering if we need to adapt our options slightly.
Yeah. I was thinking the same thing. It makes sense to, as we worded, have, you know, the, the chair or designee, I think would make sense there. Or we could just say the chair or vice chair.
Either way, I think is fine. Comfortable with either. We have amazing school committee members with lots of experience. So very comfortable that you can designate.
All right. Any other?
So was there a decision on permanent or temporary language? I think you had mentioned something about for a period of time or do you want to make a decision?
Well, I, I am just providing you options. I don't know if you felt comfortable doing it throughout the hiring season or if you wanted to have stop gaps to kind of check in. It's entirely up to you.
Yeah. I'm in, where it's new, I'm in favor of something a little bit more contained. What would you, how would you define the hiring season?
Oh, well.
I know. I know. It's hard.
It's a domino effect.
Yep.
So what happens is as positions are filled, others become open in other districts. And so that is the potential for someone to maybe move closer to their home or they might be moving, a spouse might be moving somewhere. So it really is a domino effect. Sometimes we have an internal candidate that wants to move and then we have to open a new position. So hiring season started a couple of weeks ago, but it truly goes through the summer.
Okay.
I have a question. And even retirements, we literally found out about it. I have a question. And even retirements, we literally found out about retirement last week. It can happen.
Has this concept been vetted through our legal?
Yes.
Okay.
Great question. Did she have any suggested wording?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion, for the motion, you mean?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. I guess if we could.
Do we want to?
I guess did she have, did she come up with any suggested like wording that would kind of work through some options or constraints?
If we wanted to put a time period limitation on it.
Yes, to the next school committee meeting was one of the options, yes.
Okay.
Until the July school committee, or whatever you'd like. It's completely up to you how you want to structure that.
I would be in favor of once a month. I think every school committee meeting is excessive. We meet every two weeks.
Yeah.
So it would be like every other.
I don't remember.
Yeah, let me check the
The calendar.
Let's see. All right, so we've got the 20th and then July 25th. Yes, we have a little bit of a gap, which is nice. Yeah, I'm seeing the 25th. So I think we've got the July 4th holiday and then Yeah, so we could do, using whatever the suggested, suggested motion wording is, but through July 25th and then reassess at that meeting and decide if we, if we want to extend. Okay. I think, I think it's a reasonable workaround. And just again, helps put us in the best, in the best position to fill positions with, you know, qualified people in a very competitive market.
And I just want to assure you that the contract also is very specific about what I can allow credit for. So I would never posture to up in a number of years that a person didn't actually have experience, full-time qualified experience under their license in order to get a candidate to the district. It's very specific that it must be for actual years in the role, under a license. Or in a clinical setting is also in there. So it's not something I leverage to try to get candidates. It's, it's just giving them credit for actual years of service.
Yep.
I would be very supportive of doing it till July 25th and then understanding in July, how many of these circumstances came up and how that translated into hires. So we have a sense of that.
Sure. And if it was anticipated in the budget or not, we'll give you all that information.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Just to understand the implications.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Okay, so can you share or pass down the suggested wording?
Yes, the motion to allow a hire above step seven in hard-to-fill positions if the superintendent and school committee or designate determine that it's in the best interest of the students of the district. The results to be reported out at the next school committee meeting where the decision can be revisited. Or, excuse me, July 25th.
At the July 25th.
Yep. Okay. All right. Would you mind if I read your notes as I say that out loud?
I don't know if you can read this, but I will. Yes.
Okay. Okay. All righty. So, so with that, do we have any other discussion on this? Are we ready to go ahead with the motion? Okay. Okay, so I make a motion to allow a hire above step seven for hard-to-fill, for hard-to-fill positions if the superintendent and the school committee chair or designate determine that it is in the best interest of the students of the district to be reported out and the decision revisited at the July 25th school committee meeting. So moved, Lumen.
That's impressive. Percy, oh, second.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
That was an impressive
Decoding.
Decoding of the adjustments that we made to the language that was provided. I incorporated the sentence. It wasn't very clear.
Sure. Yes. Okay, okay. Yes, so a motion for a brief recess?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, five-minute recess. Great. Thank you. All right, everybody, welcome back. Next item on the agenda is the schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, we approved warrants 086S and 090S for routine operating expenses. Okay, and then our next item on the agenda is our student representative to the school committee update. Marvel?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So as the school year is coming to end, there's not much going on, but there's a lot of celebratory things going on. So we have at away, we have junior prom this Friday. And, you know, we recently had graduation. The freshmen just finished their science MCAS these past two days. Finals are coming up for tomorrow, all the way until Tuesday, with Wednesday being the last day of school. And then we have step up day on the 10th for EMS all frames and I'm pretty sure RO as well, where the grades that are transitioning into the next school or the next building get to get like a little preview of the schools with information and all of that from not only staff and students. So OA is doing a lot of prep for the eighth graders to come in. And I'm assuming EMS and RO are doing the same. And then for EMS, they have the spring concert for the sixth graders tomorrow. And then they also have step up day. And then for Richardson Homestead, they have their fifth grade concert. And then Blanchains, I'm pretty sure the last day is tomorrow. And I saw a lot of kids running around at field days in front of OA, which is really sweet and cute. So I know they were having a blast and having an amazing time. And then lastly, on behalf of all students, I would like to express the deep appreciation and gratitude towards the teachers and staff that are retiring. We will absolutely miss each and every one of them and a happy retirement to them all.
Great. Thank you. And thank you to you and the other musicians who performed today at the, at the retirement party. It was lovely to have that background music and you're all so talented.
Thank you. We were all delighted.
I was waving to Marvel, but you were concentrating on reading the music, so you did not.
Same. Marvel, I looked to your face to take a picture of you and you didn't even see me.
I was, I was in the zone, I promise. I'm sorry.
It was amazing. You were, you're
You were wonderful.
It's impressive.
Such an accomplishment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or additional comments from Marvel? All right. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up is public comment. So I'm seeing none tonight. Superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
I only, well, I'm trying not to mention any of the celebratory things. It was wonderful to have the retirement celebration today. I wish them all well and thank them. So such a heartfelt thank you to them for their many years of service to the Easton Public Schools. But I also want to thank all of our amazing team members for really giving their all to students and the families every single day. We can only get it done as a team and I'm very proud of all of them and all of our students. And I hope everyone has a wonderful summer. Wednesday is the last day of school for students. Kindergarten's
Friday.
Last day is this Friday. But Wednesday is the last day of school for all students, grades one through 11.
It's, it's tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Tomorrow, sorry. Kindergarten's last day is tomorrow. Students grade one through 11, last day is Wednesday and it is a half day for students. And that's all I have.
Because it's school committee, I think that tomorrow is Friday. So that's why. I apologize. Yes.
I'm disappointed it's not actually.
All righty. Assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt.
Again, I also don't want to take the celebrations away from all of you, but I do want to let you know, all three of you actually were in tenant, were in attendance for the civics presentations today. And just how, going around to each of the eighth grade civics, civics projects and the groups and the students that worked individually on their projects, they did a really phenomenal job. So a shout out to their teachers who guided them through that process. It really is an extensive process. In fact, there's actually a civics guidebook on Desi's website that the teachers follow. And, and this is all because of the law that Governor Baker passed in 2018 requiring more civics education in schools. But this is actually extremely important and wonderful. So in all my years, this was one of the best that I've, that I've seen. So I'm really proud of our eighth grade students and I hope that they continue with their advocacy as they move up to Oliver Ames or any other high schools that they're attending. And I, I just want to, again, just say congratulations to the teachers for guiding them through this process because they really did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Great. All right. School committee notes. Lauren?
I will say that graduation was beautiful. It was a beautiful day. It was like picture perfect. So congratulations to all of the graduates and their families. And this is our last school committee meeting before the last day of school. So I hope everyone has a great summer. And we will be meeting throughout the summer. So, you know, everyone, we invite everyone to come to.
Turn your mic off.
I'm not going to repeat all that. So I hope everyone has a great summer.
Okay. All right. Kelly?
Just a few things that I wanted to touch on. For those who are registered, just a quick reminder that if you have a child starting kindergarten next year and you've already done your registration, the dates are starting this week and into next week to go through the screening process, which is important for placement. So just a quick reminder on that. And if you have a incoming kindergartner and have not yet registered them, it is not too late. So please do. And the sooner the better so that the school can understand the accounts and think about the classrooms. And it's a great opportunity too, for the kids to start to see Blanchains because they get to go in for the screening and see it, which is pretty awesome. The other thing I'll just touch on is I know the high school is going into finals. So good luck to all of the kids in finals. Hopefully, the slightly cooler weather tomorrow with the rain will make it a little easier to concentrate on your finals. You will get through them. You will survive them, so it's all good. But good luck to all of you on that. And then graduation was beautiful. I was very moved by all the speeches, but also the reminder from one of the speakers and that these, these were the students who entered the high school wearing masks in COVID.
Yep.
So I'm very grateful that their exit was much better than their entrance. Let's put it that way. For our good kids. So for knowing, knowing kids who went through all that, I think it's a lot. I mean, for every kid it was, right? I will say the, all of the nights were beautiful. I will leave the parent of the senior to talk more about those. It was great to participate in them though. It was my, the first time as a, a school committee member. It is, I made as much as I could and it was beautiful. It was also great to celebrate the retirement of such amazing people who have been serving our community. But I do want to say that going to the eighth grade civics program today was not only impressive, the way that the kids actually worked together and presented their topics, but there were a number of kids who touched on similar topics and the topics were close to home. They all found sort of personal passion projects, which was incredibly impressive, including several on mental health and concerns about drug addiction, but then also just concerns about animals in shelters because they actually are overcrowded. And given the post-COVID time period and kids who are concerned about things like composting and litter that they're seeing. And so I, I think it was very impressive. They have voices that we all need to be listening to. And if you were someone who received one of their communications, I know there's probably a flood of them that came through in the past few days as they were getting ready, but please take a moment and acknowledge them. Because these kids, you know, they're, they're trying to find their voice as people. And so encouraging their ability to do that is really powerful as well. So it was a, a great, great opportunity for them to, to learn more about it and to figure out the process as I do, as far as school committees. So very, very nice for them. And that is it.
All right, great. Well, very well said. Those civics projects were so thoroughly researched, well-thought-out, well-presented. And I was just impressed with all of the ones that I was able to see. So great job there. Thank you to all of the staff who put on the incredible graduation ceremony. You know, it's, it's not just graduation day, but everything leading up to it for the seniors. They are so celebrated and really made to feel so special and have, you know, all of their contributions to the school community and their friendships and their relationships are celebrated so beautifully. So class night was fantastic. The outpouring of support for our graduates in terms of awards and scholarships is really, really astounding. I think, I tried to do a quick count. There, I think there's over 200
There's over $200,000.
Over $200,000 worth of scholarships that were awarded. And I think over 200 individual scholarships. And then many of those are given to multiple students. So literally hundreds of scholarships awarded, scholarships, awards and honors that were given to our students. So, you know, we just can't thank the community enough for all the support and love that you show those kids. And the monogram night for, for graduating athletes was wonderful as well. So again, thank you to the administration and all the staff who worked so hard to put all those and all the staff who worked so hard to put all those nights together. The kids certainly enjoy them, and their families do, too. Onto a couple of business items. Dr. Cabral and I met with some leadership from Stonehill and some leadership from the town last night at a meeting that used to happen annually and hopefully is back to annual. And it was just nice to work with such a valued community partner and see what they have planned for campus initiatives and improvements and talk about ways that we can continue to evolve our collaboration. And so we look forward to that partnership continuing and thank Stonehill for inviting us and hosting us. I have a quick update on the Frothingham Committee. As you know, the chair is a member of the Frothingham Park Committee, and we have been discussing the school committee's role in nominating trustee to that board. And so I had a call this week with a member where we were able to ensure that we are basically on the same page. And I know I've briefly updated the committee previously, but they are pursuing, they're looking into the process for having the court process amended to no longer involve the school committee in this process. But in the interim, that is, of course, something that will take quite a bit of time. We discussed having the committee vote on a nominee with a lot of information that I'm going to put a request in writing for what we would be looking for. So I would, you know, I'm thinking along the lines of just the normal things that you would expect when appointing a member to a board. So what are the roles and responsibilities of the position? What are the qualifications they're looking for? And then how does or do any candidates that they would like us to consider meet those qualifications? So I think we're in a good place there. And hopefully, we'll be able to have them come, provide that information, and attend a future meeting. And we can have that discussion, possibly vote for a nominee, and help them proceed with that step while the long-term discussion about getting an amendment to the original trust agreement that involves us will work itself out so that we won't be doing this into perpetuity. So. And then, let's see, so some other events coming up? Or the PMC Kids Ride was this past weekend, right, at Blanchains? And had, you know, a beautiful weekend for that. And then the Pride Celebration is coming up on June 15th, and they are looking for volunteers. So you can go to the town website and reach out to a member of the Human Rights Committee. And they are certainly looking for help making that a wonderful celebration down at the Rockery. And I think that's everything, unless I missed any major.
Can I add something?
Of course.
Okay. So attending the eighth grade civics project today was impressive, as everyone has mentioned. The eighth graders did an amazing job researching their civics project. But similarly, last week, I attended the fifth grade cultural expo, which.
Oh, yes.
Which is each fifth grader chooses a country to do a research on, on everything that, the food, the population, where it is on the map. And just, and some people choose the country that their family is from, or some people just choose a country that is of interest to them. And that, and everyone, everyone told me when I went through that, you know, they now want to visit, and they really learned a lot. And it was really, really impressive. And the fifth graders did a really great job. And so kudos to them and their teachers for leading the way for them. It was really great. And tonight, I also went to the fourth and fifth grade band, orchestra, and chorus concert, and they did an amazing job. And it's just so fun to watch their first year of music in the Easton Public Schools. And then, you know, so many times throughout the year, we see OA music students. So it's just, it's just fun to see the transformation and the influence that, and the, I don't know what the right word is, but of how wonderful the music program is in our district. So that is all.
All right.
So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak again.
You're welcome.
And actually, if I can just add one thing. I'm sorry.
Yes.
The registration for the Summer Enrichment Academy and Math Academy is closed at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Did we get the registration?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yes.
That's great to hear.
Okay.
Yes. Well, and June 3rd was the cutoff, June 3rd was the cutoff date. Yes.
All right. So next up, I make a motion to go into executive session to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 2187, to comply with open meeting law to review minutes of a prior executive session from May 6, 2024. Can I get a second?
Per se, a second.
And all in favor? Oh, this, I think we need to roll call vote the exec session. Let's roll call vote just to be sure. Okay. Roll call votes. Star, yes?
Lewis, yeah.
Per se, yeah.
Okay. All righty. So we will head into executive session and return briefly. Thank you. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Next item on the agenda is vote to approve meeting minutes from, let's start with the April 23rd, May, uh, May, April 23rd. May 23rd. We're all tired. 2024. School committee meeting. All righty. So any questions, comments, or edits about the May 23 regular meeting minutes?
I do not.
Okay. Yeah. I had, I had no edits either.
Do you want to say it? No, I haven't got my copy. Do you want my copy?
I guess so.
Okay. Maybe shift it around.
Oh, plus one.
Okay. Well, then I'll take my copy back. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So were there any questions, comments, or edits on these? Okay. All righty. So then I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May 23, 2024. Can I get a second?
Per se, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next up are the workshop meeting minutes from May 23. So for these, I did have, oh, actually, just a quick tech check. Lynn, can you hear us? Oh, we don't have.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay. So for this, I had a couple of edits. So on the first page, in the big paragraph at the bottom, two, three, four, five rows down, the word clicks there is misspelled. So if we can just get that spelling corrected in the final version. And then, and I think Lauren has the correct spelling, but three rows up, it was Braylen, B-R-A-E-L-Y-N.
B-R-A-E-L-Y-N.
Yes. Okay. And then her apologies and her notes.
So on that same. So. So, on that saying, so, on the first paragraph of the committee update, we're saying goodbye.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that, Lynn.
Yes.
Okay. So, for, on the first paragraph of the Student Advisory Committee updates, we were saying goodbye to Annabelle, Alyssa and Braylen because Braylen is not continuing. But Annabelle and Alyssa were graduating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
On the back, in this first line at the end, he's been working with the National Honor Society period. There shouldn't be anything for the rest of that sentence. And Mrs. Sweeney has, shouldn't, is misspelled.
Okay. Any other edits? Yes. Okay. All right. Then I will make a motion to accept the workshop meeting minutes from May 23rd, 2024 with noted edits.
So moved, Loomis.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Let's see. Next up, we have the regular meeting minutes from May 28th, 2024. So, these were basically the call to order and go into executive session.
Mm-hmm.
All righty. So, any, any questions, comments or edits on these?
No. I think there's, the time is wrong, the time we adjourned.
Oh, yes. Yep. Thank you. So, Lynn, the time in the very last sentence should be 4:03 PM.
Sorry about that.
No problem. You've, you were cranking through a million
There was a lot of these this time.
Documents for us. So, thank you.
My brain was continuing processing. Do we go that late? Do I have any of this?
Okay. All right. Then can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for Thursday, no, sorry, Tuesday, May 28th?
With edits.
With noted edits. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. So moved, Loomis. Percy, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then regular meeting minutes for Thursday, May 30th, 2024. Any, it's similar, so call to order exec session and return to open session with a vote. Any comments or edits here? I didn't see anything.
Okay. Right. I read it wrong.
Okay.
Nope. No comments.
Anything for you, Lauren? All righty. And can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for Thursday, May 30th, 2024?
So moved, Percy.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next up are executive session minutes. So, we will just go through these one at a time and see if we need to hold any for a future executive, for discussion at a future executive session or approve but not release at this time or approve and release at this time. So, for the May 6th minutes, I would like to hold those for further discussion at a future executive session. I think we can, depending on how these go, we can vote these in a block if we have any others.
Okay.
Okay. So, May 23rd, similarly, I'd like to hold these for further discussion at a future executive session.
Yep.
Yep.
Let's see. May 28th?
I think we can release.
Yeah. I didn't have any issues with that. And then, I didn't have any issues with the 30th that would need to be held for future discussion. So, all right. So, let's, okay. Yep. All right. So, let's at least, so the 6th and the 23rd, I make a motion to hold the executive session meeting minutes from May 6th and May 23rd, 2024 for further discussion at a future executive session. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All righty. So, May 28th, I meant to look into this. Are these, Dr. Cabral or Lauren, if you recall, I know that the discussion obviously about the scholarship recipients is confidential until, but since they've become public and have been announced at class night, we can, we release these and they become public? Or do they still stay? I always feel a little squeamish about
It has the dollar amounts on it, which I, yeah.
Yeah.
And do we redact the student names? Well, they receive them at class night, but I'm wondering if we should be redacting anything else. I think we need to hold for further discussion.
Okay.
Only because it, I just want to make sure we're handling the confidentiality of the students correctly.
Right. Yeah. There's a lot of info about students.
There's where they're going and how much they've received. And I just want to make sure that we're handling that appropriately.
Yes. I agree. Okay. All right. So, let's, we'll check the precedent then for past releases.
Yep.
All right. So, let's again, hold this for a future discussion.
Yep.
Okay. And then, all right. So, let's go ahead. We'll vote this then. So, I'll make a motion to hold the May 28th executive session minutes for discussion at a future exec session.
Percy, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. And then finally, the May 30th executive session minutes. Is there anything here that we need to discuss at a, within a future exec session?
I'm sorry. Which one is this?
This is the Thursday, May 30th. So, I might have said May 28th.
I don't know. I don't know why I can't keep this straight right now.
Do you want to look at mine? See if you had any? I didn't see anything that is incorrect or needs discussion.
I believe so.
Okay.
I would think it would be a proven hold though.
Yes. Yep. Because it hasn't been finalized.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Then, so I make a motion to approve the meeting, the executive session meeting minutes from May 30th, 2024, but not release at this time. Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, our next meeting is Thursday, June 20th at 6:00 PM. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. And second?
Percy, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.